We will call the September 4th Pennington County Commission meeting to order. We will stand for a moment of silent reflection and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Presiding Judge Jeff Davis. Hmm? Jeff Davis, would you lead the pledge, please?
I'd like to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any items on the agenda that they wish to address?
Mr. Chairman. Dan Richer. I'd ask that item 13B be removed from the consent agenda and so we can discuss this.
When we get to the Planning and Attorney Commission consent agenda, would you make that proposal again, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items on the agenda that wish to be changed, discussed, removed?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, or the agenda, rather. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda, and Holly Ennis will read that into the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Ennis, your office manager. For full public disclosure, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act upon non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today I have placed the following two items for your consideration on the consent agenda: the minutes of the regular meeting from August 21st, 2012, and the approval of the vouchers.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to remove either of those items from the agenda?
We need to make a correction to the minutes. Do we need to remove that?
The minutes?
Yes.
The minutes will be removed and dealt with separately. So that leaves item six on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item five.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item five? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item five.
Yes. In the minutes where it talks about the crisis care supplement, that needs to say that it's coming from a signed crisis care reserve, not unassigned.
Do we need a motion to make that correction?
I think you usually do make a motion.
Motion to that effect?
Second.
Moved and seconded to correct the August 21 minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, 2011 Audit Exit Report, Department of Legislative Audit.
Morning.
Morning, Bruce.
We're finally finished with the audit. I thought I was going to have a draft copy of the report with me, or a final copy of the report with me today, but the typist didn't quite get her done. So I'm thinking later this week, sometime maybe next week, they'll have the report, it'll be issued. Like I said, they were hoping to have it done today, and I was going to bring it along with me, but we didn't get her quite finished up. Should have three documents, I believe, in the packet that I had sent to Holly. One is on Pennington County letterhead. That's our representation letter. I need the chair's signature on that letter. If I could get that today before I leave, it would be great. I've got the original here. If you can, if you have time to do this, okay? Give it to Karen and Holly, and then they can scan it and read it. I've got Julie signed it already.
Mr. Chair.
That letter is just a standard letter we have signed at the end of the audit. It gets some things in writing, I think, that have been discussed during the course of the audit. That's what that letter is. We just call it our representation letter.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize your signature on the audit form.
Second, Dan.
Motion and a second to authorize the signature on the audit form. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Proceed.
Okay. The other letter is on our letterhead. That's our management letter, something that we've been issuing, I think, the last four or five years, six years maybe, at the conclusion of the audit. It gets things in writing that we used to maybe just discuss orally. There's also any written findings that are included in this letter, something that was changed in the standards. And like I said, it's our management letter. It's broke down into three areas as far as what our findings were, as far as internal controls, any violations of laws, and then any potential audit adjustments that we have. And as you see on the middle, about the middle of the second page, we have a finding this year in the audit report in regards to the motor V monies that's distributed to secondary, to the special highway fund, which we also go secondary road, and to the townships. There's about four revenue sources that go into that calculation, into those funds. And what we discovered this year was the road miles that were being used for the county share, where all of county road miles maintained. And it should be just the secondary road mile, or the unorganized road miles is what it should be. You've got your township miles, which they get their share based on the number of miles in each township, each organized township. And then the rest of the county, whatever considered unorganized, is the share you guys keep, and then use that for the unorganized roads. And what happened was the miles that were being used for those unorganized territories was the total miles being maintained. So it represented the county retaining, and it's in this management letter, about $350,000 more than they should have for fiscal year 2011. I've also attached a copy of the comment that will be in the report. That's the third document that you should have in your packet of stuff. And what we're recommending is you correct 2011 for that $350,000 and portion that back the way it should have been to the townships, and then whatever's been done so far in 2012. I think, I'm pretty sure we've given spreadsheets to the auditor's office as far as what the mile should be. We've worked with the highway department to get those miles straightened out and put them in the right direction of where the distribution should be.
Any questions or comments?
At the bottom of page two there, we have a couple oral things that I was just going to talk to you about. We call them more immaterial-type findings. Like I said, they're at the bottom of page two. We noticed when we were reconciling cash, some of the bond money that U.S. Bank had set aside was in something called a commercial paper, I think, which isn't something, isn't a legal type of investment as far as South Dakota laws are concerned. I talked to the lady out in St. Paul. She sounded kind of surprised that they had invested in that. She tries to stay up to date on legal investments and stuff, and she was half apologetic to me as far as putting that money into that account. And I guess it was only $204,000, and I talked to KJ about it, and the money was spent, I think, and cleared out of that account sometime in early 2012. The risk you're running is, you know, depending what type of an investment it is, you know, it goes belly up or whatever, you could lose some money. It sounds like the lady at U.S. Bank, though, that you guys deal with, tries to stay up to tune on all that. So just something to kind of watch. You know, I told KJ and Julia, when you get those monthly statements, kind of look them over and make sure that they're not, you know, for the most part, we've never seen any problems, you know? And then it was a small amount of money, so we weren't too concerned about any risk or anything, but some just to be aware of and to kind of watch for the future. So especially when you've got somebody outside the county kind of managing your bond funds, because it's all the bond money that's for your big construction project. The other item listed there was when we were testing the federal programs. We had a little trouble with some of the timesheets, the documentation for the timesheets and charging time to the federal programs. The timesheets existed. It just wasn't real clear how much time they were actually charging to the federal program versus how much time was spent on other county business. And anytime you start splitting time up, you've got to have to have a pretty detailed timesheet. Al, I know he's the one that worked on the grants. He spent some time, one of the grants was down in planning and zoning, and I think he spent some time down there getting them up to speed on how to keep track of the time and being able to document it better for our purposes when we test the federal programs. So just something to be aware of for the future. As far as the report goes, those are the only findings I've got to go over with you today. As far as the report goes, I mentioned that I was hoping to have that with me today. The opinion letters are clean opinion letters, which means the financial statements are fairly presented. There's no qualifications or anything like that to the report, so that's a good thing. The only other thing I have to talk to you about today is the audit bill. It's going to be a little higher this year because of the time we spent on the motor V money and the problems we had with that, and then also with the federal grants. We, last year, the feds put in, A-133, put in some new requirements for testing internal controls over all the federal requirements that are applicable to an individual program, and it's just created more time for us. Last year, I think we wrote off 50 to 75 hours in the federal grant area because we were trying to get up to speed and figure out what we were doing. This year, we had three grants, three different grants that we had to test that weren't the same as the grants we tested last year. And so we had had to work on all them, and it just takes more time. So I don't know how much more, how much higher the audit bill will be. I know Russ, my audit manager, spent some time working on that, excuse me, the motor V money and the distribution of that. And I just wanted you to be aware when you see the audit bill that it'll be a little higher than what it has in past years. So, other than that, I don't have anything else. If you guys don't have any other questions, like I say, I want to thank everybody that helped us with the course of the audit. Like I say, it was a good report, good audit. We're happy with that, so.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Bruce.
Did you sign that letter?
Yes. Okay.
I don't know if we've ever actually had a budget supplement at 9:15, but we're going to today. Good morning, KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. The first supplement we have, I guess I better look on the agenda and see which one was first, is the supplement for the general fund auditor's budget for the software purchase that Julie presented to the Board at the meeting on the 21st. There is $220,000 that has been placed in the general fund assigned software reserve that came from some designated 2011 and 2012 budget and some overcollected revenue. And in addition, we have $40,870 of overcollected revenue this year that will support the total request for 2012 for this purchase of $260,870.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to supplement the auditor's budget by $220,000 from the assigned software reserve dollars and $40,870 from overcollected revenues collected in the current year for a total of $260,870.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
That would be the supplement requesting $28,295 from the general fund assigned crisis care reserve. There's approximately $550,000 in that reserve. And Karen Romy, and I believe, I wasn't here, there was a presentation at that last meeting. This will add to the, this will suffice for the crisis care center for the remainder of 2012, and again, will come from that reserve that's already been assigned.
Any further discussion? Motion?
Make a motion to supplement the general fund crisis care center budget in the amount of $28,295 from assigned crisis care center reserves.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item C.
I don't have item C, do you?
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for the supplement, by the way. As, we'd sent you quite a full set of documents on a piece of property that Pennington County took back on September 18th, 1917, that we just became aware of lately that we own. The tax treasurer's deed as attached goes through some of the history. Shannon is here. He was here, thank you, is here. He worked quite diligently on this, along with Jay and the treasurer, to make sure that we do indeed still own this piece of property to date. And what we need from the direction from the Board is since we have a couple of available interested bidders who have requested that it come up for sale outside of our normal December, mid-December tax sale, we're coming to the Board for direction. We need, the estimated value of the property is $140,000. I've attached the reviews by planning and the Director of Equalization, which is something we go through on every single piece of property that we take, so it's to provide more information for the possible buyers. So basically, we need direction from the Board if you want us to sell it now, or if you want us to hold it until our mid-December sale, which is held by auction, or if you want, and if you want to sell it, it needs to be declared property as surplus to be sold by auction or sealed bid, and we need to know if you have a minimum bid that you want to place on it. Shannon is here to answer any questions about the property. I can answer the process questions.
Who's been using it for the last 90-some years?
We don't know.
We don't know.
Somebody's probably running cows on it. There's some deeded property in the area, and there's forest service lease in the area. I don't know who's been using it. But other than cows grazing it, there is no use.
It's not, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's not fenced out or fenced in that we know of, so.
No.
Who discovered this? How did you discover the fact that since 1917, we've had it?
There's a story to that. Can't easily answer that. This was homesteaded around the turn of the century. I forget the guy's name that homesteaded it, but he homesteaded it, had it for several years. He deeded it to the federal government, I think a quitclaim deed or something similar. There might have been a process whereby you could give back your homestead to the federal government, and they let you go somewhere else and homestead, and he left the country. There was an unpaid tax bill for several years during the time that he had it. It was never pursued to the point of a tax deed. Just in the last few years, in the recent history, the federal government wrote a deed that included this parcel and several others that essentially said, if we had an ownership interest in this property, we don't now. Then it was discovered. For all of this time, it was assumed that the property was for service. When we got this deed from the federal government, then that prompted a look, and well, why this? And we found this, we found the unpaid tax bill. It's gone to a tax deed now, and now we're at where we're at. But for all of these years, the assumption was is it was for service property.
Is there deeded property that touches that?
I think so. That's easy enough to find out. This is the property we're at right here. There's forest service, forest service, there's deeded. Deeded right here. So yes, on the west side.
Who's the property owner?
And this is deeded up here as well, on the north side.
Do we have the owner on there?
That piece there is Bees Clapridge. The same there. This is Driscoll. And then forest service on the other side.
Any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Julie, is there any reason to have a special sale for this? Would we not?
The only reason we're bringing it up is that we have two interested buyers, and the property is probably easier to get to now than it is in December, but no, we do not have to sell it early.
Have we publicized this, or are these two people just privileged of some information that nobody else knows about, or?
All the tax deeds are on our website as we finish them. One owner is, one property owner that is in the Bees Clapridge is interested in it as well as somebody that's known by our auctioneer. And since they requested that it be sold, then I usually bring that to the Board for decision. But no, you don't have to sell it early.
So in terms of specific motions, you enumerated one that we have to declare it surplus?
We'll declare it surplus at the time you want me to sell it. If you want to sell it now, we'll need to declare it surplus, and by what means you want it sold at, and if you're going to set a minimum bid, or you can just decide to sell it with the mid-December sale.
So I'm trying to decide how many motions we need and which?
First, you need to decide if you want to sell it now or in mid-December.
Okay, let's take that one. What's the wishes of the Commission?
Mr. Chair, I would, since we have an interest in it, I would move that we sell the property now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to sell the property now. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. How long has this been listed on our tax deed on the website? Do you have any idea?
Just this year, we took it in, we took it the 10th day of November, and it takes us about three to four months to run it through our process, through review for the DOE and planning. And there's no securing of this property, so it's been out there that long. When we declare something surplus to sell, we have to go through a notification, and then it's sold at either a public auction or a sealed bid that the Board would open. So it's publicized at that point. And we can do any additional advertising that you want, that you want to pay for, which we do for the normal sale in mid-December.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, goes to the next meeting. Is there any information I can bring back that would be helpful, or are you just leaning towards selling it in December?
If you, informally, I would see no reason why not to sell it in December.
Okay.
But there's three other people here, so.
I guess for me, it would seem that if you have interested buyers, this would probably be a good time to sell it, and you'd be more likely to get a better bid because they're interested.
I doubt if their interest will wane, but that's speculation on my part.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The only reason I voted against the motion was because I don't know that the people out there that could really be interested in this thing are aware of it. I mean, since we've been holding on to it since 1917, it's kind of a surprise to me. But I just picked the name out of the air and wrote it down on a piece of paper here before you said who, or Shannon said who owned the property, and I hit it right on the head. And it makes me wonder if everybody out there that could really be interested knows, so that's the reason I'd like to see it in December.
If you sell the property at auction in December or any other time, do you have to set a minimum price?
No, you do not have to.
And what's the relationship between the price it's bid and the appraisal? I take it that this is an appraisal?
I don't know if I can call it an official appraisal.
It's an appraisal by an assessor in our office, and it just, it gives the auditor's office an idea of the value of the property they're dealing with, and something for the public when they look at the property they got on the website. A lot of the properties that are taken by tax deed aren't worth very much at all. This is just something for the public to know, what is this, for their interest.
But the point is, there's no relationship between the disfigure and what it would have to bring at auction in order to complete the sale?
There's, to my knowledge, there's no requirement that it bring even a percentage of the appraised value we have. It's just for the county and the public's knowledge to know what kind of property it is. Nothing holding the county to sell it at that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The only thing that would hold the county to sell it for that is if we put, if we'd put that minimum bid at whatever he recommends. And so that could happen now, or it could happen in December.
And you can set the minimum bid anywhere you want, anywhere the Board motions.
I think it probably is worthy of further thought.
Okay.
Can I just make one remark?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davis mentioned that, you know, people may not know about it. Well, I think one of the things that we pointed out earlier in our conversation is that as we get towards our normal sale in December of surplus properties, it's more difficult to get there, so if someone is interested in it, you may lose that sale. This is food for thought, since we're having food for thought. You may lose that ability to have more people interested in it because they can't get there to see it as easily as they could now. So just food for thought.
Yes. If and when it goes up for sale, there's always additional advertising per se that we would request either now or in December so that the public is more aware of it. That's usually done by the auctioneer under his contract prices. So, see you next week, next meeting on it.
We do not need to take action to declare it surplus at this time, then?
No. We'll do that at the next meeting if you decide to sell it now. Otherwise, we come back with the list for the mid-December sale.
Thank you. Move on to item nine, lien release request from real property.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Todd Schwager. I'm the attorney for Ms. White, who is standing next to me. You have before you the August 29 letter, I believe, that I submitted to Ms. Hennies of your office with our request. We're available for any questions that you have, or I can explain the situation from square one.
Mr. Chair, I do have some questions. One of the things I would have preferred, because we did receive notice, Mr. Schwager, that a sum of $155 of the lien that was listed, which is number 18 on the title search, had been released and written off. So, I, this isn't quite up to date, but I would rather see from our county the report that we normally get that says why these liens are on there. I found it a bit confusing because there were so many different names, and they didn't really, they weren't the name of the person who owned the property. I'd like to understand why.
I believe I can shed some light on that. Back in 1974, a prior owner of the property died, and in their will or in the probate process, the ownership of the land was fragmented among that individual's children, and one of which was Dave Johnson, and another of which was Hope Alban. Now, this Jim O. Mohammed Aflo Abbi is not, of course, one of those individuals, but it's our understanding that he was somehow involved with Mr. Johnson, so the lien was filed against both of them. And a number of these liens actually were placed on the property after the tax deed was signed to my client back in, excuse me, I'm finding, 1992, in fact. I believe virtually all of them, except for number 18. But Mr. Johnson's interest in the land still appeared as an heir, so the liens attached after the tax deed, the treasurer's deed, was issued.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question of our attorney, Mr. Alderman. We have been handed a list of what those different purposes for the liens were, and there are very few medical. Everything else is court-related, court-appointed attorney, those kinds of things. We can't release those. We can only release what the county spent, right?
Well, the court-appointed attorney's fees are still county liens.
Okay.
But I think I need to attempt to explain something here. When a tax deed is issued, there's a statute that specifically lays out what liens, if any, survive the issuance of a tax deed. County liens are not one of those. So, if there was a county lien against that property, once that tax deed was issued, that county lien is gone. If there were any county liens that came about and attached to that property after the tax deed was issued, those survive and are still there today. Those would be available for you to take some action on. If I understood Mr. Schwager correctly, there are some liens that Ms. White had added, that were added against the property after she acquired the tax deed?
Yes. I'll accept number 18, which Commissioner Troutman just indicated has been written off. The rest of these were added after the date of the tax deed, which was 19th of November of 1992.
Okay.
So, we have 96, 96, 95, 2001, 2001 as the dates for the tax, I mean, for the liens.
Okay.
Those were not created, though, by my client. They were by the heir of the former owner.
But...
And I don't know how that happened.
The tax deed, I...
She, yeah.
Okay, so...
So, she had the tax deed in 92?
Yes. Here, I can provide...
Well, that...
Were added afterwards in somebody else's name?
If that's the case, then that shouldn't have happened because there was no interest in that property at that time by the lienee, we'll say, by... So, one of two things we have to deal with here today. Liens that were properly attached to that property before the tax deed was issued are gone. Any liens that got attached to that property after the tax deed was issued in Ms. White's name, and they are her liens, are still there. If none of that is true, there's no liens affecting this property with regard to Mrs. White.
But they're still appearing for the title company search, so we still have that problem as far as the title company is concerned.
And in that regard, then, the county should take action to release the, those liens with regard to this specific piece of property. I don't know, maybe those folks have other property that those liens could be attached to, but as to this property, there's no apparent interest of those folks in this property. Does that make sense?
Not really, but...
Would the commissioners care to see a copy of the treasurer's deed to verify that date? I don't believe I attached it to my information, so I certainly can provide it at this time.
I trust your 1992...
I mean, the point is, if I had a lien against me, I couldn't, that lien could not attach against one of your pieces of property because I have no interest in your property. So, to the extent that that accidentally happened, or there was confusion over it, those liens should be released of record so there isn't a title issue anymore.
We're kind of unsure which of those are. So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we do further research on the part of the county to make sure that we're taking the proper action against the correct liens before we make any motions. So, if we could have that, if we could move, I guess I should restate that, I would move that we continue this till the next meeting and do the research to find out exactly where we stand as a county on this.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Holloway.
Is this going to create a problem for you guys if we continue this for two weeks?
No, I don't believe so. We're working on the quiet title action at this time, so we have to go through that process. It's been since, as I say, 92, so it's been 20 years that she's owned this property with this problem outstanding. Of course, we just learned of it with the title search, but no, there'd be no, long answer, no problem.
Way too weak. Well, I don't think there'll be any doubt that it'll be, they'll be released from the property because they're not, she's not listed on any of these, so...
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
And we should note that this is a historic meeting. We've gone back to 1917 and now 1992. We might catch up.
Yep.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Next item is item 10.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We opened bids for repairs of Playhouse Road on August 29. We received three bids. One was $261,336.68 from Quinn Construction. Another one was $244,444.80 from, the first one was Lynn Exco. The second one I just said was Quinn. The third bid was SiteWork Specialist in the amount $172,803.50. We reviewed the bids, and we would recommend awarding the bid to SiteWork Specialist in the amount of $172,803.50. If you remember, we bid this project about a year ago or late last fall, and our bids were $600,000. And we revised the specifications. We visited with the Forest Service, and we got a disposal site. We're going to have to blast some rock, and we got a disposal site right next to the project, which really reduced the cost. We also removed all the asphalt items. Once the road is done, the repairs are made, I will use county forces to probably prime and chip seal it and do the asphalt work. So, that's why our bids are much lower, and we feel they are doable at this time. That's why we're recommending low bid.
When do you start this project?
We're going to start as soon as we get a contract signed. It's going to be a fall project. We do have to close the road. It's about a 20-mile detour for some of the people that live in Custer County. And so, hopefully, he can get in there, cut some trees, blast the rock, get that, most of that hauled away so that if we do get snowed in, we can open it up as a one-lane road for the rest of the winter. But we want to start as soon as we get a contract signed, which is about 15 days.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the recommendation of SiteWork Specialist as presented by the highway superintendent.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. Half-time.
Could you do a committee report?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we take a break until 10 o'clock.
Be back promptly at 10?
10.
Your second?
Second.
Motion and a second to recess the meeting until 10 o'clock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The annual budget resolution provided for 2013 for a budget of $81,999,349, if you want to approve it at that amount. You can establish any additional hearings that you want. All changes made to the published provisional have been made in the minutes, which was just at the last meeting, and it's ready for public comment and resolution by the board.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Yes.
I guess, just for the public's awareness, where for a number of years, the county commission has set a goal of having somewhere around 20% in reserves, what we actually closed, and consequently, then, they may be questioning why we're spending $9 million in cash reserves to support the 2013 budget. The actual reserves that we closed 2010 with was 27.3%, and the actual reserves that we closed 2011 with was 32.62%. Those higher numbers were arrived at by additional revenues that was not projected to be received, as well as unspent budgets in those years. So, taking the $9 million out of reserves to support this budget is fiscally responsible and still keeps us with a estimated reserve balance of 20% at the end of 2013.
Any further comments? Any comments from the public? What's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is this the only public hearing that then we need to have, Julie?
Yes, this is the only public hearing.
We could approve this budget at this time.
Yes, you could today.
Well, I guess the only reason we may want to put it off till the next meeting is because Commissioner Buscuit is not here today, so I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that.
I would certainly agree with that point of view, that the full board being here would be more appropriate, and that meeting is scheduled for the 21st of September, on Friday instead of a normal Tuesday. So, if, is there a motion required to defer this to the 21st?
Basically, you need to set...
Always nodding her head?
Yes.
So, if some commissioner would care to make a motion to that effect?
That would be my motion to continue this to the 21st of September for the...
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to defer action on the annual budget until September 21. Any further comments? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Now, I think someone said we had to do something at 10:30.
We're here. We're here. It's at 10:30.
So, next item is items from the chair, and I don't have anything particular.
It would be my suggestion to move down to committee reports and do items from the public. I'm working on trying to get your executive session moved up to 10:15 if possible. I don't have that answer quite yet, but legally, we cannot do planning and zoning until 10:30.
So, you recommend we move to item 14?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I have is to say that the Central State Fair went off basically without a hitch, and that things went over very well out there. We had, like, an increase in people coming to the fairgrounds for public activities, and that's about it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I attended the Community Health Board meeting on the 30th. They are trying to plan for a new building, so I'll just keep you updated. They're not real clear where they're going, who their collaborative partners might be, but they're working on that. So, I'll just let us know, of course, how to fix our Health and Human Services when we figure that, when they figure out what they're doing. So, I'll just keep you informed about that. And then this week, there is a Mountain Pine Beetle Collaborative Effort meeting on Friday morning that will, I'll be attending. I'll kind of keep you up to date on what that, what is happening there. They're in the process of trying to hire a person to handle that collaborative effort and accumulating money. I've met with the other counties, asking them to help us with that, so some of them will be deciding that this week.
Commissioner Holloway?
You know, I was to a couple of meetings. Dispatch had a meeting, continuing to talk about their plans on getting a couple of additional radio towers put in, one east and one west of Rapid City. They're working on identifying...
They're working on identifying the finances for that, and ultimately, that'll be coming back to the board. And then I met with the Emergency Management Board, Matt, to review funding requests concerning the Homeland Security money that came in to try to prioritize them. This is being done by region this year, so the Pennington County request for Homeland Security money will have to go to the region before it's finalized. Those are the two that I had, in addition to the construction meetings that we normally have every Tuesday.
I attended the Extension Board meeting. That was last week, and they had a good board meeting, a very good report from the four-H program. Definitely got a wide variety of programs underway, good enthusiasm. They had a very attractive four-H Achievement Day display during the fair.
Very nice.
And I think our staff people that are performing in that office certainly deserve a lot of credit.
I have an executive session to fill fifteen minutes, if you're to that point.
Do you think we can handle it in fifteen minutes? We do yet have items from the public and would certainly deal with that agenda item now if that's wish of the board.
Fine.
You're comfortable?
Sure.
So at this point in time, anyone who wishes to express a concern with the commission on any issue not on the agenda is certainly invited to do so, and the one condition would be that if the item is not on the agenda, that we cannot take official action on it, but possibly could place it on the next agenda. So is there anyone wishing to involve themselves in public comment? Another recess?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to go into executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion and a second to come out of executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session situation. Motion to authorize over-hire by one FTE in the Public Defender's Office, paid for by existing budget as mentioned by Paula.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Is the Secretary comfortable with the motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Or can we do the consent agenda first?
Whoops, we got four more minutes, don't we? Sorry about that.
At ease.
In four minutes.
No recess, just at ease.
Can we do the consent agenda before we go into a Board of Adjustment?
You what?
Could we do the consent agenda before we go into Board of Adjustment? I know that item B wants...
Dan's gonna take item B off himself.
Okay.
I think we should wait.
Okay.
You gotta, in case somebody shows up.
Danny, any report on that Nebraska fire that you could give us?
I'll try and make this in three minutes. That'll fill the gap here. Got back last night, went down Thursday, early Thursday morning on the West Ash Fire, down by between Shadrin and Crawford. The Dolphet Fire is northwest of Crawford, basically north of Crawford. The West Ash Fire is probably sitting at nearly fifty thousand acres. I didn't hear a final, no, we were over sixty thousand, we were about sixty-five thousand at the final. Lost a number of structures, some structures were, I call them, primary residences, maybe four or five of those. Lost a number of outbuildings such as shops, sheds, barns, that type of stuff. Had no injuries, and I'm aware of any firefighters. We did save Shadrin State Park, lost no buildings in Shadrin State Park, lost a lot of the forest around it, which is sort of on the west side and the north side of Shadrin Park. There's a Camp Norweska, which is a Methodist church camp. We saved all the main buildings, the lodge, the chapel, the caretakers, or I guess, house. Shower building, several, we just called them bunk rooms, they're about twenty by twenty or so, cabins. Lost five or six of those, saved four or five of them. So some extreme fire behavior. Made a run Friday night, basically from just east of Crawford, a couple miles, all the way to Whitney, which is about twelve miles. It was tremendous support, though, from the local ranchers, landowners, the volunteer fire department, Shadrin Crawford Alliance, Hemingford, all those. I absolutely could not believe how much time they put on that fire. So it was that Friday night run was jumping, oh gosh, the ranchers that go out there with discs, and they were probably thirty-foot wide, and they'd take four and five paths, and they'd just walk right across that. So, but when the wind's blowing forty miles an hour, it's pretty tough. Anyway, team did very well. They're gonna be turning it back over to local people on Wednesday night. At least that was the plan, so. Anyway.
Thank you.
Good job.
It is now ten-thirty. Your motion?
Still stands.
Is to go into a Board of Adjustments, and did we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to go into a Board of Adjustments. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Dan?
Good morning, Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, twelve oh-nine, for Lynn and Ann Thompson. This is to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to one foot, and to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from eight feet to three feet for an existing carport. In addition, the applicant is also requesting to reduce the side yard setback from eight feet to six feet for an existing garage. Staff is recommending to continue this until the applicant ceases operation of the commercial use on the property prior to County Board ruling on this variance request. This is located at fifty-five forty-two Meteor Street, and it is zone suburban residential They did build some structures on the property without getting building permits, which included the carport. The carport is what, is one foot from the street side, and then also they were building a deck onto the mobile home, which they would be able to get a building permit for that if the property was in compliance. It does meet the setbacks. Surrounding area is primarily developed as single-family residence. Currently, there are three violations on the property. The twenty-by-forty carport located on the property, the deck on the property, and then they're also running a business on the property, a touring business, that they operate and park vans on the property. That is not a typical home occupation, and there would be no way with our current ordinance to bring that into compliance without the operation ceasing on the property. The County Highway Department indicated they do not support waiving these setback requirements, especially being only one foot from the front property line, which is next to Meteor Street. Staff is recommending that this be continued until the operation of the carp or the touring business cease from the property.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Dan, who built the buildings? The current homeowner built them, or somebody before that?
The carport, yes, was built by the current, and the deck. The deck was actually under construction when we found it, which was the current homeowner, and then also the carport was built by the current owner.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to disclose something. I've known Ann and Lynn and helped set up, helped them with their banking when they set up this business, and I felt like I should disclose that. I don't believe, I have not really had any connection in that way for several years, but I did feel like that was kind of a different connection than normal, and I wanted to disclose that.
So are you going to abstain, or?
I guess I did talk to the state's attorney. It's been several years since I've been in the banking business, but I did begin, helped them begin their business in that respect. So I, he felt that, he agreed with me that I should disclose it. I don't think it makes a difference at all in my decision-making.
Mr. Chair? I would, I think that Nancy's integrity is good enough to allow her to vote on this item if she needs to, and then, of course, the planning department is asking to postpone anyway, so it's not a big deal. We really need, we need four votes to do much of anything, so.
In terms of this issue, if you want to talk about disclosure, I went and looked at the property, visited with Mr. Thompson, and explored the thing, but I have several questions, but one of the questions, Dan, and this is just a matter of interpretation, the business vehicles in the shed, or port, whatever you call it, and we didn't, Mr. Thompson and I didn't discuss this, but do they do the organizing of the tours there at the property, or not?
I don't know the exact extent of as far as what they plan from the property, but I do know that they have the vehicles stored in the carport, and they do have employees coming and going from the property, which is what makes it a violation on the property. Is that your...
This kind of thing would apply to someone in the construction business that drove a pickup home with commercial licenses on it, or how do you, what's the differentiation between that and conducting a business on the property?
Well, typically, I believe if a contractor just has a truck and he goes from his own property, he lives there, and he's the only employee that would be coming and going from the property, is the owner. In this case, they have additional employees coming and going from the property.
Where do they, where do they actually do their tour business?
I believe the Black Hills.
But they pick these people up someplace, or how do they do that?
I don't know where they pick up the people, but I do know, actually, when our code enforcement officer was on the property, he was visiting them with, about the deck, and that's when he discovered, because one of the employees actually came onto the property and jumped into a van to drive away from the property. So I don't know if they pick them up from the property, or if the tour people come to the property or not. The applicants are here, if you want to ask them more questions about the business itself. The little that they explained to us, our ordinance would not allow this as a home occupation.
I understand that part, but I guess, you know, among other things, as we, as we talk about a home occupation, that's a whole nother subject in my book, but, you know, somebody could sit in their house with their computer and do a lot of business, and so, and that's certainly not, you know, at some point, we may do an ordinance change or amendment or something, but the matter of putting this, or moving this, or deferring it until they cease operation of the business, is that something that's actually been communicated, and they're in the process of moving it somewhere else, or what?
I just spoke with her just right before this meeting, and she is indicating that she's looking for other property to run the business from. She said she had one in place and that deal fell through, but I believe she could explain that a little further if she wants to.
Sure.
But if you're looking at denying it, you could make a motion and write on it today, because then the business would have to see, the structure would have to be torn down.
I certainly don't want to dominate the conversation. I think at this point, it might be useful if we heard from representatives of the property.
Some pictures in here of what we have, so you can understand better. My husband put this together for you.
I'm Ann Thompson. My husband Lynn is over in Afghanistan working. He was in Iraq when this was built. Just to give you a little background as how we ended up here in the first place, was in good faith. We've never tried to cheat anyone. We bought that property through John Preston at Battle Creek Agency, and one of the first questions we asked him before we even put a bid on the property was whether we could park our tour vans there. And he said he called the planning and zoning people. Unfortunately, he didn't write down who the name was, so I don't know. So it's his word against our word. But we never would have put an offer on the property if he hadn't said that. So maybe that's our fault, we shouldn't have proceeded to make sure we had it in writing. Unfortunately, my husband is better at this kind of thing than I am, and unfortunately, he was overseas, you know, and he's retired military. So now he's in Afghanistan, so he's not here. So I will try to answer all your questions. He did put this book together for you, so you could see the pictures of what we have done. And I, to answer your, one of your questions that you asked, Dan, we have been trying to find a place to move the vans, but that's not real easy when you have five vans, and some of the places was exorbitant rent. We are not a large company, and so we couldn't afford it. And the one place that was really ideal, unfortunately, by the time we called the rental company, they had rented it to someone else. So we're still in the process of looking. We've got a couple different rental companies that are looking for things, a property for us, if it needs to be moved. The next question is that the property is a place to store the vans. Our business is driving people through the Black Hills doing narrated tours, and the reason we built the carport is because it's important for those vehicles to look good. People come in and they pay some money to go around the Black Hills and want a narrated tour, they don't want a junky vehicle, and there was pitch from the trees and everything else dropping down, so that's why we built it. And the bigger vans, it was hard to back them in when you were up close to the house, so that, you know, and I had a handyman and my son build it, and we are at fault. I agree, we did not get the building permit, and I trusted them, my handyman, and he messed up. He said he talked to people, said we didn't need it, which is obviously not true, and we know that. And so, and as far as the garage goes, that was built in nineteen sixty-four, so that's been there a long time. And we did buy the house with clear, we assumed clear title, that everything was appropriate in that particular instance. And as long as we're talking about the deck, we were only adding a roof to our deck. We already had the deck there, we just wanted to add a roof. And we will, when this all gets straightened out, we will certainly get a building permit for that. And on these pictures here in the book, my husband drew lines that show where it's located and how far back it is and how close, you know. The neighbor next door, before we ever built it, we asked him if he had a problem with it being built, or he didn't. So it hasn't been an issue with them, but it's according to, I guess, the ordinances and things is where there's a problem.
In your packet, there is a... In your packet, there is a sheet that has a couple of receipts.
Yes.
And on August fourteenth, twenty twelve, you paid one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for what?
That was to request a variance, and because we didn't get a building permit, they charged us double for the building permit, and then they also fined us for not getting a building permit. And then we've paid three hundred and eighty dollars to send out sixty-five letters to people that they requested we send the letters to. And we have the sign in the yard that they asked us to put up, and my husband put that up immediately as soon as he got it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Three hundred and eighty-five dollars to send out sixty-five letters?
They require that we have certified with a green card to return it. It was five seventy-five a letter.
It's up to that high now with the, no wonder the post office is going broke, people quit using it.
Mr. Chair, I think one of the things that had originally concerned me is that one foot clearance we're talking about at the end of the, of the carport. But if you really look, if you drive by there, and I was glad he put this picture there, because, because what I was worried about is like if snow removal or anything gets, you know, there's not room for that, but, but I, I didn't see that that was going to be as much of an issue, and I wondered if the highway department had seen that, because that is going to be their concern. You know, if we have to remove snow, I recognize that they, because it's so close, that limiting what you, what the street can be widened to is a problem, but, but I did notice that. I wondered if the highway department had been able to see a picture like that.
Well, the highway department, I believe, knows, I don't know if they went out to the property or not. I don't know that.
And that, well, and the trees are in the borrow pit. That's outside of our thing, so they would have to, I guess, deal with the trees.
Remove them.
Yeah. Those aren't our trees, anyway.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would make a motion to postpone this until the next commission meeting, until Commissioner Buskerud is here.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question first? As far as, I mean, the staff is requesting that this be continued until you should cease operation of business? You know, season's almost over, and I guess I, that particular restriction is a concern to me. I would rather continuous, continue this because Commissioner Buskerud is not here and not ask them to cease business. It's the, nearly the end of the season.
That's true.
That's why.
This is our busiest month with retirees, and then after that, it slows down. We're a seasonal business.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure that was where we were heading and not necessarily saying that in two weeks, you have your business closed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I second your motion.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. And the decision of the chair to allow the motion to continue breathing until the second was delivered. Anyone contest that?
Did you put the oxygen on it?
At any rate, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
So make, help me to make sure I understand, so I know what I need to do. So, so what's happened, so what, okay, you've, we're waiting until, so we need to come to, come back to another, the next commission meeting? Is that right, or what happens?
That'll be on the twenty-first of September.
Okay, all right. And then come back and with a presentation again, then, is that right? And hopefully by then, we will have found someplace to move them to, too, because like I said, we are still actively looking, so, yeah. And then I guess we can talk more about what, how you feel about the carport then, so.
Thank you.
All right, September twenty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you listening to our thing here.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Consent calendar of planning and zoning.
I am requesting that Item B be pulled and for reasons that it was not calculated correctly in regards to the repayment program, and that we request to continue it to September twenty-first. Item B, the Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Moved and seconded to remove Item B from the consent agenda and move it to when?
September twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Any discussion? Any comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the, oh, excuse me.
I just want to make, Dan Richard? Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure this is not, this is being moved to September twenty-first and removed from consent? So this will be a separate issue on the next agenda? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't think that was part of the motion, to make it a separate agenda, agenda item.
I think we will, we would just have to pull it and then discuss it as a separate item with the idea that we just recommend that it be continued to the September twenty-first meeting. I don't think they can do that in the consent calendar, because it's different than what's in the cons...
What they're asking is on the twenty-first for it not to be on consent calendar.
Yeah. Will it be, will it still be there, or?
It will be on the...
We're not putting it on consent, yes.
Is this appropriate time to request that it not be in the consent calendar?
Do you have additional information that you'd like to talk to it about?
Yeah, I'm a little confused on some stuff here, yeah.
Then we can put it on either or, so we'll put it on the regular agenda on the twenty-first.
The, yeah, the decision is whether or not it's put on the consent calendar is made with each agenda, not separately, so.
Thank you.
Your request will be noted, Dan.
Okay.
Okay, we did not vote on that motion, did we? Are we ready to vote? Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Rest of the consent calendar, would you read into the record, please?
Item C is a second reading of a rezoning request, twelve oh nine, for Robert and Cordelia Johnson to rezone four point one zero six acres from General Ag to Low Density Residential District. Item D is a second reading of an ordinance amendment, twelve dash oh four, Pennington County to amend section four oh one, the intent of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, and the county board approved the first reading on August twenty-first. Item E is a plan unit development review, oh two oh three, for James McCannon to review a PUD to allow twenty-nine residential lots and a day-use retreat center, and planning commission had recommended staff to proceed with rezoning the property to a plan unit development. Item F is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoning, twelve oh eight, and comprehensive plan, twelve oh six, Shane Guidel, to rezone eighty acres from General Ag to Suburban Residential District, and to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from Low Density Residential to Suburban Residential District. And planning commission recommended to deny this without prejudice in, on both items.
Does anyone wish any of the items that have been read, Item C, D, E, and F, anyone wish to remove any of those from the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification. I believe when you read E, you said rezone to a PUD, and isn't it from a PUD to...
Oh, yes, to rezone from a PUD to General Ag.
Just point of clarification.
If no one wishes to remove any items, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Items C, D, E, and F as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Items from the public.
We had that already.
Well, we'll give it another run.
Make sure, you don't want to end before a...
What are you trying to drag this out, do you?
Do we have any further items? If not...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.